Welcome to the 2013 Steen City Commission Debate here at the Steen Community College, hosted by both the Steen Community College and M Life. I'm David Taki-Taki, one of your two moderators for the evening. We'd like to take this moment to welcome you all here to MCC. First off, what I would like to do is I would like to bring in a guest from M Life to open this interview and have a couple of comments.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that we, this is the second time we've done debates through M Life and Chronicle. We feel it's a really important part of what we do in the community. We're really pleased to have everybody here today. I want to thank the candidates again for agreeing to work with us on this, and I hope that you find this illuminating. They generally are, and it's usually an interesting exploration of the issues facing our communities. So again, thank you for participating.
Before we get started, I want to take a moment to explain the format of debate. We'll be calling all of the candidates by their first names they've agreed to in a very cordial way. So first off, we're going to have the candidates give their opening statements. Beyond that, we'll enter two rounds of questions. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer each question, given a minute to do so. After the candidates answer a question, we'll ask if anyone can answer a follow-up comment or rebuttal. We'll have approximately 30 seconds for those remarks. After that, we have a series of simple yes or no questions for the candidates, which will be given the opportunity to answer. And the order in which the candidates will be asked the questions has been determined by a pre-game lot drawing process, all very fair. Lastly, we'll go into a series of directed questions, at which point in time the candidates will have an opportunity to ask one question of one of their opponents. And we'll go into either a final question or the candidates' closing comments, the order which has again been chosen by them. So, we have, gentlemen, you're ready to begin? We will begin our 2013 Steen City Commission Debate. David?
Starting with opening comments, welcome candidates. And first will be Bill Larson.
Thank you. They got the oath guy up first. I was first elected to the City Commission in November of 1979. Back then, I think, I thought I knew every, now that I'm 65, I know that I don't. But there are some things I do know about city government: proper food, order, the city charter, the city's master plan, the city's unions and the townwide employee, the city's utilities and the water filtration plant, the wastewater system, as how it relates to the city, Act 51, which is a governing law that funds city streets. Five areas where I hope to make a difference are crime slash public image, economic development, abandoned or empty buildings, city employees are being asked to do more and being paid less, in concern of senior veterans, youth and the poor. Both for me as well for experience. Thank you very much.
Next up will be Ken Johnson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's good to see you all here tonight, and I will be hearing from your individual questions afterwards. I also would like to thank the Missyman Chronicle, MCC, and the Chamber of Commerce organizing this event. It's most appreciated, and their efforts to better inform the voters strengthens our democracy. I am Ken Johnson. I am running City Commissioner at large, as you all are aware if you're here. I'm born and raised here in Muskegon. I know our community well, having attended Oakville Elementary, St. Middle School, and Muskegon High School. I share in our citizens' aspirations for a better Muskegon, and we all want to see, we all recognize that Muskegon has such great potential, but we haven't been able to achieve it over the years. We've had our fair share of obstacles, and we always get up off the ground. I also have a little bit of a book of words, having got degree in international affairs at George Washington University, and I'm not a college student from Muskegon, so I'm here to bring my talents to bear, to make Muskegon the very best place possible.
Next, opening statement, Mark Malaner.
Good evening, everybody. My wife and I, Kim, have lived in the city of Steen for 18 years in various locations. We are actually small business owners, have an air salon in the city of Steen that we developed and run since 2007. Myself, I've been employed at Essa Island, which used to become New Anker Rock, since 1996, which is actually a local, larger local manufacturer in the city of Steen. So one of the reasons I'm running is I believe I can bring the voice of a small business owner and someone with the experience in the industry, bring that voice to the City Commission to help, to help the board a little bit better. Speaking of my qualifications, I graduated with engineering degree from Western Michigan back in 1988. I've worked in the engineering field since that time. The past 10 years, I've worked in engineering management and also staff. So I believe that my education, my experience, my experience of running projects to completion, my experience with managing people, with long-term strategic planning and budgeting will be an asset for the board, and we can help to make them, to help them make better decisions and affect positive changes. Thank you.
And last opening statement from Dan.
Hello, Dan Seatinga. I've lived in Muskegon for 10 years. I came here from living overseas. I've been really welcome to the Muskegon community, and the thing that I like most about it is the ability to step right in and make a difference wherever you're at. I've been involved in a lot of volunteer and professional activities, and I feel a lot of those relate to the job of City Commissioner, so that's why I'm running. In particular, I've had some experience related to jobs as the Dean for Course and Town Development here at MCC, as well as working for Muskegon Area First. I've been active in my neighborhood association, which is very concerned about public safety. I was the downtown manager in downtown Steen from 2005 through 2010. I got a lot of experience in commercial and economic development, so those are some issues I think that are core for the city and why I was interested to run. Those experiences have also taught me to be able to listen to a lot of people, get diverse points of view, and to make good decisions that move organizations and communities forward. Thank you.
We'll start with a series of questions, each for a minute with 30 seconds to follow. And we'll start with Ken, and then you want to build, Mark, and Dan. How would you rezone the Sandy property? Ken?
How would I?
How would you rezone?
I would rezone it.
Sandy property.
Well, I would just like to make clear, one, whatever we rezone it, we rezone it today, tomorrow, what have you. It would have no impact on bearing of property as is, as it's owned by Melching. So Ken, wave a wand, and maybe it will be won tomorrow. He's very confident in there. That said, I would like to see it cleaned up and environmental risk eliminated, and then used for the best and highest purposes, which could be manufacturing, advanced manufacturing, not opposed to advanced manufacturing. Muskegon desperately needs jobs, good paying jobs. So we have light industrial and advanced manufacturing on there, whether that's windmill funds being built, solar panels being built there, that could be used. Otherwise, mixed unit, mixed purpose development there works well as well. A planned unit development is what we're going to pursue with Melching. We're going to have to work with Melching on what we can have that in a planned unit environment. We can't just wave a wand and rezone it and have that happen tomorrow.
Bill, same question. How would you rezone the Sandy property?
I'd rezone it to lakefront recreation, opposed to what Ken says. I believe that the action that the Planning Commission took to not allow the address to be stored there was the start of a long look at Melching's best interest, and Melching will have that property very much longer, and I believe that the new owners are susceptible to lakefront recreation. As far as things that I would like to see, I'd like to see it be a public-private partnership, possibility of a working sawmill, maybe a smokehouse, fish house, yacht basin, run the city path through the white path through the property, and generally just make it not a store, but a thing of beauty. Thank you.
Mark, same question. How would you rezone the Sandy property?
I guess maybe I'm a little confused, but I thought it was being restricted in the sale, so I guess I don't think you can rezone it. I think if Melching were to be able to re-look at that negotiation, Sandy, I don't know if the city could become involved in the conversation, but really, it's private ownership, and I'm not a fan of a lot of people, but unfortunately, you know, because he did buy it, zoning the way it is, it's really up to him. You can't step in there and make it profitable, depending on the money he's invested, so I guess we have to do our best to work with the, with Melching, make sure it is in our best interest as much as we can.
Dan, finally, how would you rezone the Sandy property?
Sure, it's a gorgeous piece of property. If you look at area views, it's right on Muskegon Lake. White path comes by it. There's some nice historic buildings on the corner that could be commercially developed. I, like the others, see that it is owned by a private property owner, has current zoning rights. I think that it is possible to be proactive and move ahead with some conversations about future zoning, and that could possibly impact further subsequent owners. I think that the idea that seems to be emerging of port and industrial activity and being on the east side of Muskegon Lake is a good one, and so right now, that might be preferable to so than having manufacturing or industry in the lakeside neighborhood, but those private property rights are still important. So I would just encourage the city to move forward in kind of working towards a commercial, recreational, and residential use.
Thank you, gentlemen.
May I just rebut with the 37th? I would very much like to see the Sandy property be used for best interest, but also mesh well with the lakeside neighborhood. I don't want to duplicate our lakeside neighborhood. I don't want to turn that into a mixed-use commercial residential, and we can strengthen our lakeside district in that endeavor. But we do desperately need jobs. We have plenty of commercial space and residential space throughout the city that could be adapted and reused, but we have a lack of jobs. So I would like to see that property be used in a way that could create jobs for our city.
Anyone else have any final comments?
Well, in response to what Ken said, I mean, the city here in Muskegon to put manufacturing on there is a pipe. You know, the best view for that property is recreation or a combination of port facility type development, and those create just as many jobs as whatever little manufacturing that might go through.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Jobs are a pivotal issue in Muskegon, and M Life readers specifically want to know what should the City Hall be doing to improve not just the job situation in Muskegon, but the job situation for jobs that can support a family? And the first person to answer this will be Bill.
Well, first of all, they've taken one minor step, or one of the big problems the city used to have was the Inspector Department. And for whatever reason, you've got to remember, I've been around since 1980, dealing with this problem, and so they've conquered that. You have to remember, they have a smaller staff because of the county state participation. So you've got to be able to have a staff that can take an idea, be able to be responsible to the developer, and then make sure that there are sites available that'll, you know, work for what they want to do. Some of the problems I see with the current City Commissioners, they take too long. They have a tendency to be, they don't want to act. I'm an action person. I can look at a plan and see if it's viable, and then we need to be, as employees of the city, be able to take that plan and then bring it to fruition. Thank you.
Mark, same question to you. What should City Hall do to improve family-supporting jobs?
Did you really mean manufacturing jobs? And I think, I encourage our work over in the industrial park there, and most empty buildings are now full of manufacturing, so I think there's a lot of good things happening. It's obviously not enough, so some higher employment. I think our city definitely needs to become basically known to be industry and business-friendly and be able to react quickly and work with their needs. There's just too many other people fighting for jobs, so we have to be a plus player in this. I think port development, I think that's an advantage that Muskegon has that nobody else has. We definitely have a deep water port that we need to develop, and I think that's going to be a good future spot for Muskegon. You know, we could become the new Midwest shipping channel. If you look at Chicago, they're basically rail and highway locked, so we're probably going to be able to get a lot of the overflow. I think, you know, even developing our lakefront and becoming a better place to live, a more attractive place to live, will help. It could actually be the final decision on whether somebody chooses Muskegon over Auto Colony, since we got a better beachfront, et cetera.
Dan, same question.
Sure. I'm a big believer in the multiplier effect related to jobs. We have, you know, 15,000 people working in the city in various industries, but some of them produce more economic impact than others. Definitely, manufacturing is an industry that provides a lot of multiplier and economic impact. Tourism also does that. I think that we need to focus in the planning and economic development department, should focus on those industries that can create jobs that bring wealth to Muskegon. And like Mark, so I think we need to work with our manufacturers. We've had an amazing turnaround in the Port City Industrial Park. We've been doing a lot to promote tourism, but I think the city needs to continue to work alongside the county of Muskegon in that regard. And finally, if we're going to have more people working productively, people need to be trained for jobs. I've worked as the Dean of Workforce here, and I think we need to continue to strengthen partnerships where we get people in our city training that are going to meet those jobs that are available.
Lastly, Ken to you.
As several candidates have touched on, manufacturing, manufacturers can be key. It's a key part for history, it's going to be a key part for future advanced manufacturing, which we're going to need to invest and attract. There are many manufacturers that are now insourcing, that they send, to Mexico, they send some other insourcing. We need to work to capture a slice of that pie, as well as foreign manufacturers that brought or bring manufacturing here, kind of the philosophy Toyota does, and the other companies do, the philosophy, building where you sell. And so we can, we can work to attract that as a city. Beyond that, I think that we need to be supporting small businesses. It's not just like creating jobs, we need to be creating businesses, enabling our residents to start their own enterprises, to support their families with that endeavor. And port development, we desperately need to strengthen our shipping capabilities here, increase that, and shipping logistics is going to be, and manufacturers that can take advantage of our multimodal access points with rail, water, and road.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments? No, thank you. Ken, from what we hear from our M Life readers, there's a great interest in what you folks would be able to do, or what your positions would be on the downtown urban violence, mainly from a number of our urban neighborhoods, gun violence that we've seen in the community in the past few years. If elected, how would you address this issue, and how does redevelopment and safety in our neighborhoods fit into that plan? Mark, you got the first.
All right. Excuse me. Well, you know, it's just like any organization, safety is always one of the top priorities in the top priority. I think, you know, obviously, economic development is going to help us on the long term, you know, more jobs are out there, the less idle time and people around the streets. Regarding what to do about the short-term problem, I'm an engineer, and we have a saying, it's all been done before, I would like to see a committee put together, a safety committee, staff as such, you know, the chief of police and prosecutors, et cetera, that could go and task to research with other communities that have done similar issues, find out what works and if it doesn't work, present the plan to the board along with, you know, obviously their budgeting needs and some targeted action items, and some metrics to make sure it's successful, and then to implement that plan and, like, give them the full read. The other day, I think Steve Rock did one last night, eliminated some of the white, and I think helped actually do some of our violence as well.
Dan, the same question. How would you address urban violence as a Commissioner, and how does redevelopment and safety in the city neighborhoods fit into that plan?
Sure, I think there's a practical and cultural implications to this question. On the practical side, but mark term to short term, I do think a police presence would help. Looking at what other cities do, I know that the city of Chicago had a terrible year for homicides in 2012, and under the leadership of their mayor, they really turned it around in 2013. Their two strategies have been increased neighborhood police presence in hot spots and surveillance, and I think that we should adopt similar tactics here in Muskegon. On the cultural side, I live downtown. I walk through some of these hotspots daily, and people just don't have a lot of hope. That's the main cultural element I work here. I think we need to somehow get through to the kids that are, that are prone to the violence and are brought up in that atmosphere, and either through mentoring or better achievement through schools, somehow break that cycle of despair where they really don't see a future for themselves here.
Same question for Ken. How will you address urban violence? How does redevelopment and safety of city neighborhoods fit into the plan?
I'll just jump off what Dan was saying about the sense of hopelessness in our urban parks per se. I am involved with a, we're working together, we meet regularly in Muskegon Heights on violence and crime in the Heights and in city of Muskegon, which is a bunch of concerned citizens, really. And we've been going out in communities, listening and learning, and one of the things that we've learned is this sense of hopelessness that exists amongst many, many of our youth, and fear, a fear in their communities and the neighbors going to school. And that fear causes some of them to carry weapons and guns, and so we need to deal with that fear, deal with that hopelessness, because we need to find out why those guns are getting in the community. Why has there been such an uptick in gun violence in recent years? We need to hold ourselves accountable as well. This situation didn't just magically happen overnight. Crime last year was at a six-year high. It's happened over successive years. We need to hold ourselves accountable as to how it got to the point of today. We need to equip our police force with the resources that could include surveillance. I'd like to leave that up to the community to decide whether or not we want to put security cameras in our parks or around the city. That would be loved in the city. I'd also like to see a potential village to support and enhance our policing capabilities.
Thank you. Bill, same question on urban violence and your plans and how they would fit to the city and city.
Well, there's every industrial city in the United States sitting here having a safe district, so you need to take the best amount of information you can get from the smartest people. We hire a police chief and we hire a policeman to police our streets, but are we putting the emphasis where the crime is? Do we have buildings, like empty school buildings, where we could have police substations? Are we working with the prosecutor to let him know that if you do crime in the city of Steen, you will get the toughest set of seat could be given? The only way to stop speeding is to enforce it, give tickets over and over. The only way to control some of this violence is to be where it happens and show a presence and drive it somewhere else. Anybody that comes here, wants to put a manufactured flag, and finds out where the 99th most violent city in the nation is going to think twice. So it's a real problem, and there's not easy answers, but that might be a few suggestions.
Starting with Mark, and then across the panel, any rebutts? Anything else you'd like to say?
I would just, oh, I'm sorry, Dan?
Yeah.
I waved my. I was just going to point out, I really, in regards to Ken's comments about asking the public for some of this stuff, I really feel that the police are empowered to do some of this stuff. I believe that we have the resources existing in the number of police officers we have and the equipment, the amount that we're spending on capital expenses. I think we just really need to focus on those hotspot areas, and I know we've tried to police the whole city, but we have to focus on those hotspots because that's where it all starts.
I do agree, it's one of those hotspots. Our police force has been shrunk and is in continuous shrink, and it may not have the best technology possible to equip it.
Went right in? Want me to take over? Give me a break?
All right, gentlemen. Moving on to the next question. The means by which we choose to allocate scarce resources as a city government are going to dictate a lot of what's possible in this terms of policy. So we need to ask each of you, what is your fiscal or budgetary philosophy? Where would you like to see revenue generated, any additional strategies for generating revenue? Where would you spend money as a City Commissioner, and where would you cut back expenses as a City Commissioner? Dan, you're the first one.
Sure. The city has a complicated budget. I printed out a copy, and we have like 25 funds, and there's over $51 million in all of the funds on a yearly basis. The general fund's about $24 million, and that's where we have the most discretion. I think the city has done a fairly good job considering the state of the economy in Michigan, affecting our major revenue sources, which are property tax, local income tax, and then state revenue sharing. Since those are the bulk of the revenues that relate to discretionary spending, I think we need to focus on shoring up those if we think about how to achieve revenues. And really, that gets back to the question of economic development, because all of those are based on how the economy, property values will rise and we will get more money. If more people are working, they'll be getting more income tax, so that is the key to, from my perspective.
Thank you, Dan. Ken, question to you. What is your fiscal and budgetary philosophy?
We've cut back quite a bit over the years. I kind of like to stop cutting if possible, and the way to do that is generate more revenue, obviously. We need to attract more people here, we need to create jobs, we need to increase property values here in Muskegon, and all this is going to happen from economic development. And not giving away the whole kit and the bro, also when trying to cultivate that investment with TIPA. I oppose 100% tax capture for TIPA, whereby all of the money captured from increased property taxes goes to paying off those bonds. Instead, we need to be capturing some of that, putting it back into the general fund, because these investments are going to tax our infrastructure, tax our resources, and we need to keep recuperating some money in near term and not like wait 30 years or 15 years, 30 years, however long that took to last, in order to sort of recuperate money from that tax carbon, that profit tax group.
Bill, budgetary philosophy. Where do you teach to generate additional revenue? Where do you spend? Where do you cust?
Well, to get additional revenue, I hope you would have more workers in the city. That's one way to increase it. Hopefully, you would lobby hard enough that the state would keep cutting the revenue share that we get. We're probably going to face, be facing a loss of vertical property tax. I would like to be able to have funds where we can go out and sell ourself. I'd like to be the new city manager, be out of the office instead of being in the office. You know, Brian had a certain style, which was great. I'd like to see somebody with a real dynamic personality, self-respect. What we did in 2002, when us that came in the office, the mayor and myself, who refused to pay the high cost of health insurance, we started more coal pays. At the same time, we looked at our pension situation and we went to define contributions. So the city of Muskegon doesn't really have the pension problems that other cities do. I don't see a big change in how it's allocated. I just wish we could create some more.
Excellent. And Mark, your fiscal and budgetary philosophy?
Well, I grew up in Holland Community with the Dutch, so some of that grew up on me, so I am fiscally conservative, and practice that in my own life. My wife and I always have good lower means, so order, you know, basically get ahead of the banks and ahead of your debt. I believe I'm going to break that with me to the commission. Manufacturing, we're challenged every year. The department at our company has had cost reduction goals, and the city does need to learn how to be more cost-effective. You know, granted, it's always easy to get the low-hanging fruit, but eventually you have to work harder for some other things, and there's always room for improvement, so we need to focus on that. Revenue will come with the added job, added economic development. The only area I would not cut budget would be obviously the police department. I'd actually like to see other departments cut a little bit so that we could get more police presence, I think, in the development last time, so.
Excellent. Starting with Dan, any additional comments?
I would just add real quick, that one way to generate revenue is getting Harbor 31 developed ASAP. That property's been there for over a decade, sitting with vacant lots, a lot of vacant lots, and the city's not going to have to pay for $400,000 a year, $400,000 a year out of our general fund to cover bond repayments on that property. We need to get to that development ASAP.
Next question with Ken starting rotation. What is the city's role, and what policies would you suggest to continue downtown development? Ken?
The city should be a natural champion of our downtown, promoting it and celebrating it, encouraging investment in there. The city owns very little property itself downtown, so can't be in that capacity, but it can work with our current businesses to not only make sure that they're successful, but also work with potential investors to grow new businesses downtown. And also, we need to be working with, to deal with the perception of whether or not the city is business friendly or not. There is this perception that the city is just unfriendly to our businesses. We're going to have to deal with that. We need to improve our contract, basically, the city government with regard to its partnership with our businesses.
Same question. Bill, downtown development?
Well, you know, at one point I was a little opposed to the power of the Downtown Development Corporation, but I have no problem with that. I think they've done a fine job. I think the city needs to partner with them and being the lack of employees the city has in planning and economic development to use what skills they have. You have to make the city look better. The farmer's market was a strategic move that was started back in my first term in the eighties and it's going to be, you know, come to fruition. That thing alone will bring enough people in where they can see what's there, who may talk to somebody else, who may say, what a great place for a coffee shop, what a great place for this. Just the idea that people will be in the downtown will make the downtown start to thrive. I think it was a huge plus and the anthropological finance was out of this world.
Mark, same question on downtown development?
I guess I can agree with Ken and Bill on this, that the city definitely needs to be there to break down barriers and be the champions of voice. I don't think that there's any policy that you can write that's going to suddenly make towns start developing. I think the revenue that the city, some of the local leaders and the city government took a trolley ride around town and determined that there's a lot of, kind of the gateway into the city, what does it really look like and what are the eyesores? And I think, I think that was a great idea, which I was responsible for, but I think they need to keep doing that, but then obviously also develop action plans from it, you know, how they can approach some of these private industries and private owned properties that are, you know, eyesore, they need to, obviously. They have to develop a message and go out and try to encourage these people to become better, meaner people, to clean it up because it is a gateway in our city. And if it doesn't look good, then it's definitely deteriorating as more to come downtown.
Dan, finally, and this is a question of downtown development?
Sure. Because I don't have the name Downtown Dan for nothing. I've lived downtown, I served as a downtown manager, and now I kind of view downtown a little bit more from the outside here in my role at the college. But one thing that really strikes me is that people, it is our perception, our community's perception, is our downtown. And I see that from our employees here. I see that when the college has visitors to town, they judge our community based upon our downtown. So it's vitally important that we, that it looks vibrant and is, you know, improving. I think we have a ways to go yet. The city does have limited resources, they don't own property, but they can help a lot in terms of the zoning and planning. I think that they should really encourage development of Western Avenue. I think, like Bill, the farmer's market is going to help immensely, but we need a walkable street on Western Avenue that has to be the first priority of my mind.
Back across, we'll start with Ken and move down to 30 seconds rebuttal with you.
Okay, starting with you. All right, I would just like to quickly add that we need to improve access to waterfront from downtown. That was something that was incorporated in the original Downtown Development Authority in 1988. So 25 years ago, they were talking about how can we improve access to our waterfront from downtown? And here we are, still lacking sufficient access. So we need to be looking at pedestrian bridges, board tunnels to improve access from our city's core to our waterfront. That will help be a catalyst for growth and development.
Bill?
Well, I'm going to segue a little bit. I see one of our city commissioners here, Byron. Good to see you. This argument between the city and bike path is ridiculous. And if I'm elected, I will bring it up at every meeting. Byron knows that I can be a bulldog when I have to. If I have to meet with groups that people, you know, for some reason, there's no give and take in this thing. And, you know, I have some access. I talk to the mayor regularly. I, John Van White drives me nuts, but that's in the hair. This thing can be taken care of. It's not that difficult. Farmers have to take a day off, they have to take a day off, but what that could mean is that somebody's here and says, what a beautiful city it is. Right here, here's the lake, there's the big lake. I may want to invest money here. I may want to open up a plant, I may want to open up a store. So that thing needs to be resolved because it's just something for the radio stations or the paper to keep throwing back and forth like the ping pong. It's ridiculous and it shouldn't be resolved.
Mark?
I'm good.
Dan?
I took somebody else's time. I'll give some up later.
I just wanted to add, one thing I didn't mention was the support for organizations improving downtown. I think the city did a good job this year when they're allocating more money through the Downtown Development Authority to downtown Muskegon now. I think promotion is an important part of improving downtown, so I think that should be continued.
Thank you, gentlemen. Muskegon is a port city, there's no question, just as Bill was mentioning a moment ago, we have a lake, a big lake. So the question to you first, Bill, actually, is how important is waterfront and port development to this city's future?
Well, I think it's, you know, you have to take your resources and water is our resource. So, you know, we need to make it more attractive and we need to market. I'm not in favor of moving fish with land unless the move is going to be exactly what they put in. I worked with a group that built the new bathhouse and put the laundry facilities in it. That place is packed, it's kind of like a everyday man's place where he can go and do what he wants to do. I realize that our development is going to be from the market dock all the way to the building. We all agree on that. And I'm all for some type of, say, Renaissance home to develop a property, but, and there are some other things about port development that I don't want to say, but what's down there hasn't been very well thought here, if anybody gets my turn.
Thank you. Mark?
One thing in our business is we want to leverage your advantages and obviously the waterfront and the port is one area that I guess we have the biggest advantage over everybody, so it's hugely important. I already mentioned that port development, you know, is important and we need to, I guess, continue to work with the core, the newly formed committee, the Port Advisory, continue to work with the county and the state governments to make this happen. Regarding the waterfront, I'm a big fan of developing Pure Marquette Park. Obviously, it's the old beach bar now, there's an eyesore, it's a foreign hour. I talked to Dave last night about that and, you know, I cannot wait for that place to go out and the heiresses to build something new there. I think the city did a good job on working with the heiresses and that kind of law is more, you know, we need to continue with that, that theme also.
Dan, again, the question, how important is waterfront and port development to this city's future?
Sure. Water defines us. I mean, if you show anyone where you're from in Muskegon, you point right to the edge of the water and I think it's probably the first attribute you describe when you tell someone from out of town where you live. We all get to enjoy the bike path, the wonderful state and city county parks that we have. So I think that's definitely true, we love the water. What we need to do with it in the city of Muskegon, I think we need to continue to expand access. The bike path has been great. I think if we did more development at Pure Marquette Park, Sappy, Lakeside, all of that, there's plenty of desirable properties to develop that would show off our waterfront. Port development is very important from an economic development point of view. And I would agree that with the consensus of a port authority or some sort of coordinating entity, I know that there's a lot of energy for this in the west Michigan and state community. I think we really need to get those people in Grand Rapids and at the state level focused on making that happen for Muskegon.
Thank you. Same to you, Ken. Important waterfront development?
Blue Water County is going to be key to Muskegon's future and to take advantage of our water, it's not just going to be about port development, our shipping goods. It's also going to be about manufacturing. Manufacturing would be an exceptionally water intensive process and food processing as well. So those are things that we can do on our waterfront. Beyond that, we need to be focusing on tourism, recreation, above the board, everything above the board in terms of how we maximize use of our water. And in terms of development, I'd like to see that we focusing on our downtown and our lakeside. I'm excited about the Harris House Pedal, you know, I said about CJ's being toured down by Harris House Pedal, I said going there, but I'm not keen on giving that completely, you know, all of Pure Marquette developed condominiums and hotels. I kind of like to see development being focused on our downtown and the lakeside and do limited commerce beyond Harris House Pedal via Pure Marquette, but the Blue Water County, it is Muskegon and we need to maximize that.
Opportunities for additional comments or rebuttal?
You know, you grow up as a kid and they say you're around the deepest part on the Great Lakes. Why we haven't developed it more, you know, is probably a good question, but like everybody says, it's our, both values are ours and it should look better than it does.
Next topic is the BC Cod Plant. As we know, it's expected to close or be mothballed in the words of Consumers Energy in 2016. Quite a negative for our community in terms of loss of tax base and the revenue that that brings and we've already talked about in terms of budget and those very important jobs that are out there. What should be the city hall's role in turning this lemon into lemonade? Can we start to market?
I guess, you know, they are our largest tax revenue source. It's, I guess, unfortunate. The good news is they push it off to 2016 now, I guess, and hopefully that, I guess, hope for the best, prepare for the worst. So we definitely need to be getting prepared for that. We need to, should have that in our long-term plan as a big negative that's coming up and to know that we need to start trimming our spending out to get used to that revenue that's not there. Meanwhile, I think we need to be proactive about looking to consumers' power, staying in contact with them as, you know, so we're around the forefront of what's going to be happening to it and hopefully, so we don't have the issue with Sappy that it doesn't, I guess, things happen too quickly for us to react and get in front of it. So I guess seeing a conversation.
BC Cod issue, Dan?
Very similar to Mark, I think. I know, I read the budget report today, I know the city's prepared for it. I know that when it sinks in, though, it's going to be hard for the jobs and the property tax revenue. I think the city can be proactive from a master plan perspective. Again, just kind of ties into the port question because this is kind of one of the edges of that where it could extend to. I think if the city is proactive and gets a good idea, there's a lot of assets there where they unload the coal now, that's a great shipping lane. So I think we need to work together with all those properties. And then again, working practically with consumers. I think that consumers has been a relatively good, our public service regulated by the public, so I think they will cooperate. I think we need to continue to engage them so that we, when the time comes, they have a plan.
Ken, the BC Cod issue?
It definitely is a negative, absolutely, being our largest tax contributor. But we are also in limbo with regard to that property because they're mothballed. They're not closing and they're not buying and selling it, they're mothballed. They're going to keep very good on the staff there so that they won't be subject to zoning changes. We can't just change the zoning and have it go to a different property on a different purpose because they're mothballed and continuing to use that capacity. So they could reactivate it in time. However, we should be working with them on using that property for its best use and they are allowing us access to their port slip as part of the port association. So that is a good, good thing and we need to be going along that road further in terms of enhancing our port activities.
Bill?
Well, it's unfortunate that it's going to happen, but if you're running a business, you need to plan in advance and you have to look at how many streams of revenue do we have? And we have residential tax base that hopefully John wrote a plan down on, down by Shoreline Drive will come to fruition. We will have a farmer's market property, also possibly a residential development. We have to try to work with all of our industrial ones, people that are here so they stay and we have that base. We need to try and raise some more revenue by having more people paying the income tax into the city. And then you have to be, you know, you have to look at your budget and I don't know if the day will come and we don't, we don't have an engineering department, we don't have a climate department, all we have is a police department. I mean, it's a sad, sad thing to think that we've lost that much revenue, but we have to be prepared.
End responses, starting with Mark, 30 seconds. Gentlemen, Muskegon is a diverse community and there's often, Venice is rich, it was one of our great strengths. But on occasion, there has been discussion about there being a racial divide in Muskegon itself. And that's the question we now pose to you, starting with Dan. Is there a racial divide in Muskegon? And if so, what can city hall do to bring the community together? And if not, how do you deal with people that think that this divide is a major role?
This is a topic that's really important and it's kind of too bad that there's four white people. What white men discuss, because it's really not a fair topic to only let four white people discuss. Race is a construct of our society that is an unfortunate one. Our history has brought us to this point where we are a divided society and that is true in Muskegon as well. There's positive things about the diversity, but we definitely have roadblocks or issues related to that. In terms of race, our neighborhoods are segregated, we have places of unemployment that aren't as integrated as they should be. And I know that interracial dialogue or racial dialogue that happens internally is not always positive. I think that it's very important as a city to demonstrate how to positively have race relations and to step up and realize that we need to afford opportunity to everyone in the city.
Ken, is there a racial divide in Muskegon? And if so, will the city hall do to bring it together? If not, how do you deal with things that are wrong?
As you mentioned about racial diversity being an asset, it definitely is an asset for Muskegon. I've had to integrate with Muskegon Public School and having that racial diversity there. To the question of whether there's a racial divide in Muskegon, unfortunately, there is. We have to accept that, that it exists. We can't sugarcoat it, we can't whitewash it. It exists and in order for our community to achieve its utmost potential, we have to acknowledge it and work to eliminate that divide. Whether adequate or perceived hostility, you know, between races in our community exists. We're going to have to work together on that. The city can't legislate that away. We can only provide opportunities to dialogue and work together on overcoming our differences. There's more that unites us than celebrates us. At the core, we all want the same thing. We all want to be safe and secure in our homes, we all want to be safe and secure in our neighborhoods, we all want to be in full hey, have a roof overhead and food on our table.
Well, absolutely there is and a good example of it is why we went to the ward system at Marge is because you could be an African-American person and live in the Catherine Angel area and get every vote around and never be able to get enough votes to be elected. And that's the reason we went to the ward system. And as you'll see, out of two of the wards, we have two African-American commissioners. So yes, racism exists. I switched from local school, public school, to experience diversity. And you can take diversity and you can take all the good things you like out of it, out of the culture, but then you have to live with the other parts that you perceive to be what that other culture is. I've spent my whole life working towards racial relations, I still do. I'm with bodies that might want to talk a certain way, they don't talk that way around. And it's embarrassing, we only have one black police officer that's not accepted.
Mark?
Obviously, yes, we are doing a racial divide. We're a city commission, not a superhero, so it's unfortunate that we can't do more, but I think what we can do is not have tolerance for it in the city administration and to lead by example. I mean, I'm hopeful because every generation, I think, you know, the world's getting smaller and every generation, all the kids you see, it's less of an issue for them. So I think it's just going to take time and pushing.
Starting with Dan, any additional comments?
David?
David. Thank you.
David's reference to gentlemen brings up the next question that we have. When I first came here in '81, Margaret Holcomb was providing...
So it is unfortunate that we're not going to have a woman's perspective on the city commission. I would like that. And I would like to give thanks to Villa and Sue Raygo for their service to the community over the years. They serve admirably and with grace, and I appreciate their contributions to our community. That said, I do take consolation in fact that we have many strong women in our community still that are going to have a seat at the table, that are going to have, I'm sure, any of these young tier ears, that any of us here will be open to women who are going to listen to this and get their input. And it's great that our community organizations, I look at the Community Foundation, I look at the Chamber of Commerce, there are a lot of strong women that run those organizations, that are involved with those organizations. And so women are going to have a very strong and powerful say still in our community's future, and that's the way it should be.
Bill, same question.
Yeah, it's unfortunate in a way, but if you didn't have the qualified candidates, then that's the way it goes. My first term, I served with Margaret Holcomb, Joan Stewart, and Mary Jo. My second one, I served with Claire Shepherd and with Karen Booey. And I would say this, as a man, I've sat and looked at an issue and thought I had a pretty good handle on it, and you would get a female perspective on it and would all of a sudden say, you know, I didn't think of that, or that point of view did not register in me. And they can be tough, but they can also provide a little bit of a softer side to the discussion sometimes. So it's beneficial, but it is what it is. There's someone elected, so this is what you have. I mean, you've got two or three, that's what you got.
Mark?
I guess I did find an odd in out of the, I guess, the loving primary, there was only Villa, who's already out of the seat. I guess I'm not, I don't think it's a big of a deal. I mean, I'm married, Dan is married, I know.
I'm married.
You're married. We all go home and we discuss, I discuss issues with my wife all the time, so the voice may not be heard directly. The decisions I made, or you probably talked about with my wife, someone argued that Michelle Obama is actually running the country right now, so I think there will still be a voice for all women on board this time.
Dan?
Sure. I think it's kind of a shame that there's not going to be any women on the commission so that on the night the primary results came out, it's true that no candidates were selected, and there's maybe reasons for that. I think it is unfortunate because I think that, like a lot of our social constructs, gender is a very strong one, and I think it's not a good example for our community when they can't look up to a woman who's on the city commission and it would help all of our citizens if they also want to represent them. That said, I think there's not a lot to do at this point. I think what happens with these things always is, you know, there's causes and they encourage people to run. And I think that that, what happened this time should be taken to heart by people, and it's been taken to heart by me. I mean, I'm not going to give up my chance to run now, but I think that we should encourage representative people in the city to run for election, so hopefully that'll happen next time.
Starting with Ken, anything else that you'd like to say? 30 seconds.
Going to our lightning round. Yes, no answers are what we are seeking, so we will move this quickly. We will start with Bill. I will ask a yes or no question, we'll just go down the line and then we'll double back and go to the next one. Starting with Bill, should we reform our zoning laws to increase urban farming?
Yes, sir.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
Starting with Mark, from an M Live reader. Are you open to the relocation of Fisherman's Landing for port development?
If conditions are met, yes.
Dan?
Same answer, yes.
Same.
Starting with Dan, do you support more commercial development at Pure Marquette Park?
Yes.
Ken?
With reason, yes.
Yes, I've been parking on it for years.
Mark?
Yes.
All right, starting with Ken, do you support a downtown casino?
I do not object to one.
Yes, sir, no?
Yes, sir.
I have the same vote, I can't say yes, absolutely, willy-nilly. If you know you want to go downtown, go ahead. So I do not object to one.
Bill?
Yes. And with Ken, I'm not personally supportive, but I wouldn't object to one if his rating and conditions.
All right. Starting with Bill then. Starting with Bill then, should the city encourage creation of a new summer music festival?
No.
Mark?
Encourage us.
Encourage us.
Pay for it, no?
I'm with that.
All right, then to Mark. With the agreement on current long-term water contracts, many neighboring communities, should Muskegon continue to pursue consolidation of waterfront operations with Muskegon Heights?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Yes, we have the capacity, we should make it a county water system with the city with Muskegon.
Yep.
From a Facebook poster, they wanted to know, and please answer this with one or two words, what is the most pressing issue in the city of Muskegon?
Dan?
Economic development.
Mark, or Ken?
Economic growth.
Job development.
Bill?
Crime and image.
Mark?
Economic development.
Finally, this is one you haven't heard before, guys. There are two mayoral candidates on the ballot. Will you endorse the mayoral candidate, and if so, which one? Ken?
I like them both. I work with Garland and the New Neighbor Association, he's the president of that, I'm the treasurer of the New Neighbor Association, he's a great guy. And I also know Abiyadi, met him four years ago at leadership.
Which one?
2009. I like them both, and I.
Do you endorse one?
I'm bored working with either one of them.
Bill?
Neither.
Mark?
I've got Garland's on the front yard, so Abiyadi are friends.
Dan?
Same with Mark, I'm supporting Garland, although I've got Abiyadi left.
Very good. We were having some directed questions, but because of time, we're removing those from the format. And now we are going to the candidate asked questions. So yes, each of the candidates will have the opportunity to ask a question of their opponents. By random or not, we will start with Mark. Mark, you have the opportunity to ask a question.
It's a good backfire. Dan's actually obviously in first place in primary, I think he's going to be hard on the cat, so I'm asking a Dan. If you had to, if you had to vote for one of us, who would it be implied?
I'm not really sure that's a fair question. I think I would have to say I'm not formally endorsing any of the other candidates. In terms of the mayor race, I just did, and that's a hard decision. But I think in my own race, it's not really a fair thing to ask.
So you can, okay. The question was if you had to vote for one.
Well, there is the option to only vote for one, and I'm not formally encouraging that, but that's an option.
Dan?
Sure. I have a question for Bill. How would you react to folks saying that you represented the old guard and may not be open to new ideas from new perspectives, including outside the city?
Well, that's really, I'm glad you asked me that question. I drive around the city every day, and I can look at the projects I've been involved in, from Harbor Town to privatizing garbage service, to the private partnership with Fisherman's Landing, to any number of the Holiday Inn, the center down there, the Alternative Energy Center. I've been a port folk for so many things that for anybody to think that I wouldn't be able to change is silly. I mean, I know they call me old school, but my mind is working all the time, I even know how to rap, so we get into that if you want.
Very good. Thank you, Ken. Your question?
My question is also, is Bill, and it just came tonight because earlier you said the city hall takes too long to act sometimes. And so I'm wondering if you support giving Muskegon Lakefront LSD another two years to develop that, or whether you would be more with collecting the back taxes and collecting the $500,000 as due within violation of previous agreement?
Well, you know, that's another good question, because I sat one time and I listened to Vice Mayor Pitaro say, if I had this lakefront property, I would have it developed. Well, he's never developed anything in his life. So you may have more information on this than I do, but you can't get blood from a tournament if there's nothing, if there's nothing to get, then take the property back yourself and do what you have. But I was part of that deal when it started out, it looked like a good deal when we did it, and sometimes those deals don't work out. So am I ready to give two more years? No. But I always try to find a way for some kind of consensus between two parties rather than via law. And that's not always.
All right. And Bill, your opportunity to ask a question.
My question is for Mark. I mentioned earlier in the day that there's a good chance that the state will do away with personal property taxes. To fill the holes in the city budget, would you approve a levy of our last mill that we have, of our 17 mills, as a levy? Or would you approve a rainy day fund?
I wasn't actually aware the city had a rainy day fund.
Then you don't know much of government. I mean, every government has a rainy day fund, and hopefully up to 10%.
I've gone into every job and every project with little knowledge of things, and I'm probably a very quick learner, and if I'm hard into something, I'll find out the answers and I'll make the decisions. I work in manufacturing environment, I'm vice president of product engineering, I make million-dollar decisions daily on recalls and safety, I make budget decisions, tough decisions every day, so it's nothing we can't help but do.
Thank you, gentlemen. So we're now moving to your opportunity to give your closing comments. And again, by random or not, we're going to start with Bill. Bill, please give us your question.
Yeah, I don't know how I won those, but I guess I did. I'm going to encapsulate my campaign in two words, experience and leadership. So I went today to Webster, and I looked it up, and someone experienced is skilled as a result of observation, use or practice, knowledgeable or wise because of experience. For leadership, position or office of the leader, the capacity or ability to lead. I believe I have both of those, and I would appreciate your vote November 5th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Dan, you have the next opportunity.
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate the experiences I've had. I'm kind of like overlocked, I've been here a short time, but not too long, so I think I have just the right amount of experience and knowledge of the community. And I've got a story that kind of encapsulates that. I'm on the Nelson Mayoral and Urban Association Board, it's a diverse board of downtown residents. There's a lot of different people who live in downtown, and you sit on that board, and every month when we get together, it can be all over the place in terms of where we're going to go. And I feel, I've been involved since I've been here for nine years, and I feel like I bring a good perspective to the board, and I think that that's what boards need, is someone who can listen to all the different sides, can put out there a way to move forward. And I feel like I've done that in that organization, and I think I can take that onto the city government. So I look forward to hopefully receiving your vote on November 5th.
Thank you, Dan. Ken, you have the next opportunity for your closing.
I don't know if I should be relieved or reflected that I've gotten asked a question for a fellow candidate. But in closing, I would just say, I love Muskegon, and I fervently believe in its great potential. And I'm committed to working with the businesses and residents in each of our pitching neighborhoods to bring about a citywide renaissance. By working together within our neighborhoods and across our neighborhoods, we can foster a healthy, vibrant community for all. And as your at-large city commissioner, I will work towards reducing crime, strengthening and diversifying our economy, enhancing educational opportunities, and providing efficient and effective government services. Helping ensure that the city makes meaningful progress on these priorities by voting for Ken Johnson November 5th. And please ask your family, friends, and neighbors to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Mark, your closing.
I guess first off, I was really encouraged by the number of candidates that came on and actually qualified candidates. While I said I would endorse Garland, I think Abiyadi is a good candidate as well. I'm just going to have Bill's experience on that one, not Bill's experience. But, you know, even the, I think the sports people, people up here, I think everyone has the option to come up and vote for a candidate or not, not against somebody, I think we all have a different background. You know, my background is more in the industry and small business, so I think I'd be a great choice. I guess I would be concerned with either of these two gentlemen because they like lifetime, apparently. So the city commission meetings might go on a little bit long.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. So we have now heard from all of our candidates, we've heard the closings from all of our candidates, and hopefully this has empowered you, as residents of Muskegon, to choose amongst these four gentlemen on November 5th. We would like to thank you on part of M Live and Muskegon Community College, Matt West, Dave Alexander, myself, David Taki-Taki. Thank you for attending the Muskegon 2013 Commission Dinner.
There's a restroom, if you just go.